This meeting of the town council is ordered with that for you that are here. And our invitation is going to be given by Reverend James Moore, who's a pastor of the Pentecostal Church here in Wausau, and himself a former elected official. He served on both the council and as the mayor of Brandon Ridge for about 20 years.
Yes, sir.
Been a part of the town for close to 20 years now, aren't you? Yes, if you would lead us and we'll remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Father, we just thank you for your love and mercy. We thank you, God, for all the benefits and the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. God, we realize, Lord, that without you, we can do nothing. But we want to thank you, God, for all that you have done and the progress that has been made in the town and the continued success. And there may be someone here tonight also, Lord, that are going through a need, and we pray for them, and we pray for the health, God, of the town. And we give you praise, God, for all of your glory. Amen.
Amen.
Paul, would you?
Sure. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
When I spoke to you coming across the parking lot, I intended to ask you so you would know, and...
You just neglected to tell me which flag.
We got on the conversation.
No, I will say, if it's gonna be short, I'm not...
Yeah, any...
Been at this town meeting so long.
All right. We appreciate all of you here tonight. I am pleased to see you again. And has everyone had an opportunity to look at your minutes and financial reports? Is there...
We need to pull, yeah, we need to pull around the garden, take Eagles off the agenda. Their family has COVID. They'll be here in January.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. If you have had the opportunity, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second, any discussion on the motion? How you vote, Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Okay. I should have been, we're coming to the end of our first quarter, and I have a financial report in here, we're okay.
We're doing okay, yes, sir.
We're doing okay. All right.
You know, in February, you know, you'll have them.
Have them. We're okay up tonight. Okay. All right, we're down to the clerk already.
Okay, the Wausau Dollar Club and Garden Club and Town Sign. I sent an email to the State Department on using the Affordable Care Act funds, you know, and they're not sure, their director, Mr. Jeff, and Jeff is supposed to be looking into that to see, and he hasn't heard of an eligible use for a sign.
I think that as long as it has any peripheral relationship to COVID, you know, go here to get your testing or what have you, I think that that's going to be permissible. I think that's pretty clear that that would be permissible. I don't have 100% or a rule in writing that it is, but I think it falls within the parameters of what the money is intended to be used for. As opposed to like the other funding, the ARP funds, we were talking about the city vehicle, that doesn't seem to be something, because it has to be, you know, making up for city revenue, forwarding city services, city infrastructure, things of that nature, not even some capital expenditures, well, capital projects rather, but not like a, something like a truck. I don't think that's going to work for that.
No. But on our sign, the CARES money could be used for that, or the ARP for a...
The CARES money, I think can be used for a sign.
I hope we...
Did I tell you something different?
No, I think that was it, but, you know, Kevin Parker is not working, we haven't gotten down on the CARES money yet.
What, has he given you an opinion on whether you could use that for a sign?
He has not for a sign. He did for a truck, but he, yeah, the truck, he said no on that.
Gotcha. Okay.
Is that allowed?
We're in agreement on that, it sounds like.
Okay, so the recovery, the ARPA, we think...
Cannot.
Cannot. For either one.
And I've actually, Mr. Parker, I've got a list right here. So what they specify as loss revenue, general government expenditures is one category. The necessary water, wastewater, stormwater, infrastructure is the second. You can replenish your staff if you have a loss due to COVID. Reimbursement for COVID-related, infrastructure-related, and services-related projects. Investment proceeds, that's a fuzzy one. I haven't seen a lot of direction on that one, but it's not going to apply to the... And to supplant general revenue expenditures for pandemic purposes. The key part of that being for pandemic purposes, and so that's...
Can you send me that?
I'd be glad to, yes, ma'am.
Would it be all right with the council? We've talked about the ARPA money, but if it does come out not being eligible, but CARES is, it's just $10 looks the same, it don't matter which party comes out of. Does it make a difference if we just change to the, to go ahead with the question, if we just change parts? If this one isn't fully obligated, is the CARES fully obligated?
We haven't obligated anything out of CARES. Everything I send up there to Mr. Parker is not, we can't use it for that. But we haven't got any monies. Maybe Jeff can call somebody.
Send Mr. Parker up there. Maybe he can...
Everything I send to him is not, you know, he said we can get a laptop. Well, we had $70,000 that was allocated just to Wausau. You know, we can get a laptop and a sign, you know. Sign's only $16,000, $17,000, you know.
Get a bigger sign.
Shit, yeah. $70,000 laptop.
But it's not, they don't want to give us any monies for our CARES, so we haven't got any yet, you know.
Would you, would you or would the council mind if I called Mr. Parker one day and asked him, can he, we need to come and tell us what, we need somebody to come?
Yeah, Mr. Massey was here.
I want to be, I want to be careful, you know, you never want to offend, but I was going to ask you if he could come and tell us what we can, but it seemed like people to come and tell us, we don't know what they say when they lay off. Or they don't want to depend on us.
They're not very clear about it.
Not very clear.
I'll have it back to us.
Yeah.
Well, that's, I can understand that, because we don't always know right on the spot, especially with this COVID-related funding, it's just all over the place. It's kind of a nebulous pot to fill, but y'all should feel good about what you're being told. If it's not, I don't know.
If I, if I spoke to Mr. Parker, and you all know that in both of our previous careers that we've worked together on some certain projects and basically have a rapport, if I said to him that you think this, would that bother you if I said, our attorney thinks we can, not what you think, that's why I'll...
Absolutely. Okay. To add to better than one, I'd love to have it back at home.
Okay, all right, and that's the CARES money. We'll be asking about the CARES money.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, Madam Clerk?
Okay, I'll ask the agenda, vote for the PanCare basics to set up within the town limits, so it's a fair election and a vote.
Okay. What's the pleasure of council?
I'll make a motion to wait. You said that. And they said that.
Did that approve? I, I, okay, is there a second? Let's get a second for discussion.
I'll make a, I'll second.
We have a motion and second for discussion. Can we ask them, we'd like, if they're going to do it, if anyone is going to use our facilities on, I'd kind of like to know schedule. I know that when you rent, you put it on calendar, something like that, but people who come in, want to use our facilities for public purposes, good purposes, whatever they want to, could we ask them to...
I think they're supposed to provide us a schedule, and maybe want some other, be after January, because they have to submit it to their board to get it approved when to come. And, you know, the main thing here is keep it tight to PanCare coming off of, you know.
Okay. I've had one feedback from the community that opposed it. Perhaps misunderstood, and that's a sensitive, sensitive and controversial program in some, in some cases, but, okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on the motion? How you vote, Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. West?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Okay, Clerk Sowers, as you know, I need to cut back on my hours, though. Because I got, I'm getting my social security, you know.
I wasn't aware of you needing to cut back. Your desire, your desire to cut back.
That's what I was saying.
Anyway, I'm asking permission to, let me first say that Robin is doing her best now. She's still learning, she's doing real good. She's doing most, she's doing all the water posting, just about, and with my direction, and she's doing the deposit slips and all, and I'm taking them to the bank before she makes her six months and gets bonded and all. But I would like permission to go to Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, seven hours a day, 21 hours a week. That, you're still, the office will be still covered, you know, 47 miles a week. Robin will be here from April 4, Monday, Thursday, with one hour for lunch, and then I'll be here 7 to 3, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And if there's a need for me to come in on Monday, I just swap another day. And the reason I'm staying Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays is because Council meetings are on Thursday. I don't want to be off that day to have to come in for a council meeting.
That makes, that makes sense. So you'll go three days a week?
Mm-hmm, and I'll stay that way?
And still get paid for it?
Yes, sir.
Well, you got vacation time and comp time to use up, don't you?
Oh, yeah, I still got some of that.
Yeah. Did we not pay that out?
We paid, we paid out, and I've got, oh, still got some sick time, you know, you got paid out. We paid out annual leave, 240 hours, and I, you know, I quit some annual leave, you know. But like I say, if I need to come in on a Monday, I'll switch it out for a, you know, I'll just take another day off that week, you know.
Right, yeah.
When you going to start doing that?
I would like to do that, start that the second week in January. The reason it's the second week in January is it's the end of the quarter, you know, this is where you're getting the WT's out and all, 1099's out and all, you know, end of the quarter, first, you know, there's a lot of reporting to do, so I'd like to start like the second week in January.
You know, for years, my, I've always liked to sit up for five days a week, even if we had shorter hours, even if we're closing three or four o'clock, we're closing four now, we're not five. Do you see, at one time, you agreed that you thought that was coming?
When that road closes?
But we didn't have the, we didn't have the staff, and we didn't have the resources and things like that. Do you think that's not going to be...
When that road comes through here, when anything comes, we'll probably need to be open five days a week just because of the water system being upgraded totally.
Well, you worked something with Robin then, so that, not that both of you needs to be here five days a week, but it's something good to...
Yeah, we'll, we'll work it where, maybe, want to be off on Monday, want to be off on Tuesday, you know, and still be here Friday, you know.
Okay.
We'll work it, we'll work that out.
The clerk's request is that beginning, now, when you work, Mark, we like you. But you know, we have to, you know, will you still earn full?
No, sir.
Talk to us about that.
Well, the only thing that...
If somebody asks us, and I don't think they will...
After I start, 21 hours a week, I won't get any annual or sick leave.
No?
I'll get half, half annual, half sick, you know. But holidays, it'll only be if the holiday falls on the day that I'm already, oh, you know, I'm scheduled to work and the holiday falls on that day, so I'll get the holiday, you know.
So you wouldn't get a Friday holiday or a Monday holiday? You wouldn't get paid for those, because that's not your work, yes, ma'am.
Because on a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, I get that day. Like Veterans Day, I get that day, you know, instead of eight hours. Thanksgiving, I get, you know. But like, instead of eight hours a month sick leave, I only get four hours a month sick leave, four hours a month annual, you know.
And these are things that we've done out of practice. I don't know that we've got all those reduced and writing to our...
We got those all in, right?
But that's one of the things, while we're growing and transitioning and things like that, if we're already, it seems like we're changing, whether we're getting bigger or better or not, we're changing. We need to probably take the time to look at our personnel policy and make sure that we address everything. Part-time people, do they get part-time benefits? How many hours do you have to work? You're already, or you're not, or you don't want to get insurance either?
Y'all voted to pay my insurance for one year, starting January till December. After that, I'll be responsible for my own insurance, but I'll be 65, so I'll have...
So see, all together, actually, you're leaving, it's going to save us some, something that has the potential to save us some monies in some areas.
Yeah, right now, you know, we've made a position outside and made a position inside with our ARPA funds or something, because that's what, you know, because that is related to that we have no backup here, we can add positions, you know. So that's what we've done with that money, you know, we funded their salaries with that. But we got to be able to fund these salaries when that goes away, you know.
And those monies may be sufficient to last for three years, there may be more, maybe added if the pandemic runs on or...
We've got our first draw of the $99,000. I don't know who will get the other $100,000, you know, it's probably after, we got to go reporting in April to see how we're spending this money, and that will probably have a lot to say on if we're spending it the way we're supposed to and on what we're supposed to, that we will get more, you know. But we're a non-entitled member of the community, so...
I need two things. I need that money to last one turn, and then I need to get, then I need to get elected for it to make a difference. Is it me and you next time, Judy?
You, Judy, and Billy.
Me, Judy, and Billy. All right.
In December. And I plan on staying long enough to go through a full election cycle. I plan on staying until this road is, hopefully, we get this road...
And that's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking, I'd like to sort of...
And then when I'm gone, y'all need to hire somebody else, or there will always have two people in this office.
I don't want this to sound, I know you're recording this, but I don't want this to sound like a campaign or anything, but I think when you start changing, when you start changing, whether it's Roger or whether it's any of us, when we're going through something that's going to be as major as the road thing, I think there's a chance of losing something because if anybody runs, it's going to stay with an agenda, and we all do sometimes. I think the continuity, I think continuity is a good thing, but that won't turn any shit into anything else, but the clerk's request is that she be allowed, beginning the second week of January, to go to three days a week, seven hours a day, Tuesday through Thursday, 21 hours a week, and at half benefits. What's the pleasure of the council?
And I'll take full, y'all, I'm...
I'll make a motion, we're accepted.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, and you have...
Yes, sir.
The clerk, Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Parker?
Yes.
The chair votes yes.
Okay, you have an email on small county outreach program. It looks like our Second Avenue project, you know, is going to be funded through our BBG application, but we need a project of one of our roads to submit, one or two of our roads to submit, and my recommendation on those roads is we submit Jackson Street and Jefferson Street. Those roads are in bad shape, but they're main artillery roads through the town, and they all lead either to Pioneer Road, you know, which is that evacuation route, and so, but we need to, we got to submit these projects pretty quickly, and I think it's by March, but we need to do that, to make us a project, you know. And like I say, my recommendation is...
The, we don't, okay, we've got, we've got drawings and plans, everything on second. Do we have anything else for any other street?
Not yet, we're flipping, we're getting something.
I don't want to take this, yeah.
Not long, they just got to send in a cost estimate at the start, you know.
With this?
He just needed the projects as soon as possible, because we're thinking we're going to get the...
I know he, I know that, I know that, that Kip does lots, the firm does lots for us, and they do lots if, when they aren't here or don't come here. And I have a second, Second Avenue, as well. I think the two streets you've mentioned, probably in places, one of them in front of your house in particular, and well from here to the Pioneer in particular, and then down to Mrs.'s.
A little time, the Fourth Avenue, it's already been paved, you know, and it'll time to pave your roads, that way, and we need drainage on them, you know.
And the paint circle lives, it's going to be fine here, really.
We can't pave roads, we have to, it has to be repaved on this project.
Oh, I see. We need to, we need, we need to, if we choose these two, whichever one we choose, my opinion is, we need to make sure that we, we're going to plow the road, we need to get grass off the roads, we need to, we need to pave the full width there. I don't know if you're seeing some of the county roads that's being paved now, the one in front of my house looks like a three-quarter mile highway. The one down here in front of Mr. Carter, uh, Lane, you can go by standing in the middle to his both sides of it, and if you want to have a seat, the street's need to be big, two cars to go, to go pass.
Yes, sir.
Whether, and something like, a double something, I know, passing, no, 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 try to go around them, but we need the streets to, because it's 30 more years before we do it again, ain't no telling what they're fishing on. We need to get, need to make sure that we do more than just pave right down into the road. Okay, what's the pleasure of council? We have to turn in the scott, uh, we need to...
And it says, paving of unpaid roads, we might could put a picture of Four Lane Motor Drive in there.
Roads too, Moon Road behind, behind Mr. Stevens are the only unpaid roads left in the, that are open, we got some that's planted, not open, but the only open streets are oil core and Moon Roads, and all that, I think.
They're fixing a painted circle, so that might will tie into something out there.
Billy, I'd really like to see you get a paved road, but I don't know, I don't know for everybody involved, that research, preserving what you got sometimes is not better than, you got to protect your assets and, I'm not saying don't do yours, I'm just saying, I entertain a motion to do anything y'all want to. Here's, here's, here's what I'm thinking. As long as those aren't paved and, and now, they're going to be maintained by the county, that's not costing us anything.
Right.
And if we could repair these, I would certainly be willing the next monies that we have to pave his, or not his, pave for those two roads out there. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to...
If coal, soil, and oil drive.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not trying to oppose your, your wanting them paved, but they are high maintenance, but that maintenance right now is costing us, the county's doing it for now.
Well, I, there's not really a problem on the oil drive.
No.
And coal is pretty bad.
It is.
And paint circle, I guess, counties don't get that much.
That's county, so...
Yeah, they won't do that one, you know. Okay, what's the pleasure of council? I want to call the board.
I'm making a motion for us to do Second and Jackson?
Jackson and Jefferson.
Jackson and Jefferson.
Second is in, is in the words now, I think.
Over there.
Yeah. We were going to talk to Mr. Gainer Tuesday, he didn't make it, so...
May January 4.
But we'll, we'll, okay, we have a motion to, for our scott, request issue that we request Second, Jefferson and Jackson Streets for our resource program. Is there a second in the motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? How you vote, Ms. West?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
The chair votes yes.
Okay, well, we already discussed the CARES Act, so we don't need to discuss that in the end, or so we can. You have your packet of waste management increase. This is not going to affect any of our residential customers, this is the rate increase, it's only going to affect our commercial customers. Our, the rates that we charge our residential customers is still well above the rate that their waste management is not charged. So that's just FYI, you know, we have our control over there.
Can I ask a question? Are churches considered an unmissitality as businesses?
Y'all are not, but any, none of our churches in Wausau pays for their waste management service unless they have a dumpster.
Oh, ain't that sweet, too, there?
Well, Roger negotiated that in the last contract, and also...
And we've heard that our, that our representative is going to be, going to be retiring in March, I believe, and we need to negotiate a long-term contract for his successor before he gets out of office. If any concessions we need to ask for, then we'll be down to do it.
Ronnie Bay.
Mark Ronnie Bay.
Ronnie Bay. He, he's been the county administrator in Walton County, and he retired from the lab manager, worked for, he did the Robert's for a few years in Ashville, you know, management. Now he'll go to work for his wife. Okay. I know you don't own the lane.
No.
No? This is Dan's. Mr. Carter? Do you have anything for the council tonight?
Yeah, we're just waiting on the, well, that work from, the ripping thing, on the water drive, get it fixed.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
It's going to do...
It's washed out, probably, a couple of weeks into the pavement, where the mail carrier's been running off to deliver the mail. And we need to move those mailboxes up close to the pavement after they fix that, and the same thing's going to happen again.
Yeah, yeah. That, that couple of words, work comes out from that, from the driveway good up where my niece lives, that way. Yeah, yeah, and trenching the road, we need something. All right, that's all you have? And I'm glad you're looking after that, because that will pretty soon be one of those things where our assets going to begin, we'll be back to the pavement, go back to the base if we don't do something. I go and come that way just occasionally to break up, break up the monotony of president sandwich, and it's always, I think about everything. You better do it that. Okay, Mr. Walker, have anything for the council tonight?
No.
Listen?
No.
No? Okay, Ms. Carter?
Quilt ladies, they said they just hot water in the bathroom.
You're talking about in here?
Right, we'll be here in City Hall.
I'm the one in favor.
I've talked to Tim about it, him and Dallas, and they can do that, but we have to put a corner, we free, or a little tank of water heater in each bathroom to do that, because these concrete walls and the plumbing to get it from wherever it is outside that comes in into here with hot water. But it's the same thing, we got it on the kitchen sink in there, I still have the process of it yet, but it, that should be an eligible expenditure of some of our monies, you know, to put hot water for COVID in the bathroom.
Yeah, COVID says we have to have hot water.
That's a good question about that.
Okay.
I don't know what the cost of those, or do you want to build on it?
I bet, it's, it's under my expenditure, but we have one in the kitchen there that does real good.
I just put one in my house recently for what it's worth, it was $375 for a garage bathroom, or half-bath.
That's what they...
Yeah, about $375 for some of them.
They reassigned our bathrooms at the church, and that's what they did there, too, so you don't have to...
I mean, you would go out there, do a shower.
They had to heat water for seven days a week, yes, right, yeah. Okay, can we just direct Margaret to pursue that with her, with our staff? Okay. Please, Ms. Carter?
That's it for me.
Ms. West?
Do you have a chance to check on the, the bench here? Across the...
No, we've got surprises on some of them, we haven't decided if we're going concrete or metal yet on, at the monument out there.
And the fire department, out there were the different things that they were talking about Saturday night, that different things that was wrong. How do we go about getting that fixed?
I don't think there's nothing actually wrong out there.
Were the door hangers, you may have to do it all that?
They're going to do that themselves, they say, because it's just scraping the door there. The lights, the motion lights outside, they're just set on a timer that's got them coming on at 7:00 and going off at, from, at, you know, right after daylight, you know. I think it's seven AM, seven PM, the lights are set for, and we can ask the electrician to come back and set them for six and six if we want to, but they're coming on at seven o'clock every night and going off at seven o'clock in the morning.
So the middle bay door was okay? When Beck was trying to get it to go down, it was popping?
Uh, they'll come back and redress those also. Uh, we just have to get them to come back and do that. We've got a year's one, you know, everything out there, which is well, you know, we should all follow up to, cause we haven't got a CO, you know?
That's right.
We haven't got a CO on that yet, so our year starts when we get that certificate of office to you. We haven't got it yet.
Our, our door's broken?
It's not broken, it's just like.
It's just over in the palms, the middle one.
Yeah, we won't, and, and, uh, we probably, uh, and I know they don't mind to do it, we probably don't go too good, but we probably don't need our people working on anything.
No, I don't think so, as it started working.
First year, we need the contractor to do it, they don't want to get involved, and that's the thing today.
That door that goes upstairs to open that door.
That's what we're talking about, yeah.
It looks like the hinges are loose. I tried to open it, and, uh, it looked like the hinges were loose.
I'll contact D and B and maybe come out and see what it is.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, I, I'm gonna play a moment, I'm gonna add one thing that you don't see on there. The, the, around the awesome monument out here, and that may have been a communication or a miscommunication, something like that, but is, is that, is that what we're gonna have out there, that, that, uh, square wooden frame?
We're taking that down as soon as they get the lights down after Christmas.
After Christmas, okay.
Yeah, we, they got lights up there now that comes on every now.
Okay, okay. If it's a miscommunication, it would be between me and, and Tim.
Yeah, I think I just got the water.
Because we were trying to get outlets out there for the, we were trying to get electricity out there, and we were gonna light around that part, and I was thinking around the fence of the awesome monument, and he built a structure and put lights up high, which are, you know, they're nice, but they do, put right into the top.
If it was a little higher, it would be good.
If it's a little higher and tall on, we could color the gazelle.
That's right, it'd be nice.
It would, okay, that's good. Let me talk to you about two or three things. Uh, uh, we have, we have, uh, an offer from the Buster Rogers family. Uh, Will Rogers in particular is kind of a spokesperson for the family, that Rogers Square, they would like to donate that to the city. All of us members, Mr. Buster Rogers and lived there, Miss Molly, and, uh, so on, and they all have homes away from here. None of them will ever come back there to live, and I've been a house there for many, many years. But they'd like to see, they'd like to see it stay with the town of Wausau. Mr. Rogers contacted me a few months ago, and that's what I thought, I told him, well, need to see what the family thought. They got kind of little working committee within the family, and he called me back, probably two weeks ago now, said, uh, we've all made it, that's what we'd like to do. He said, I would like to give it to you, but I'd like to have two stipulations if you would grant it back to us. One of them is they've had their family reunion there for fifty years, and they'd like to maintain that date in perpetuity or until the last one used to, where they can't come back and have a reunion. That's the second, second Saturday, September, yeah, October, I believe. The other one, the other one was that we might, uh, that we would put an appropriate marker there acknowledging the designation and the, and the Rogers family. And the third thing is he'd like to see us make it available, and he picked this up on, uh, he's got a nephew, I think it's a nephew or a cousin, that was on the county commission board in, uh, Gulf County from.
He is, he still is.
Still is. And he said that they have a couple of cemeteries down there and, and all, and so they have a, a facility similar to this that, and inclement weather or funeral homes that are coming from out of town that doesn't have a funeral, had a church, they need a place to have a committal service. It's raining, they need a place to have a committal service, a little tent, don't cover whatever, that, uh, we would make that available to, to families who might want to have a committal service for a funeral there. And, uh, I, I think if somebody asked us, we'd have probably done that anyway if we, if we owned it, but I, I told him I'd bring it to the council, and, uh, they would, they would give us that. The property runs from, uh, Buster Rogers Avenue to right behind Steve's house. As a matter of fact, uh, uh, Mr. Robbins' property runs near about up to his porch, near about up to the, to, right up to the driveway. It's a pretty good thing, and, uh, so they could give it to us at no cost if, if we would accept it and maintain it and, and acknowledge Mr. Buster and Miss Molly and all of the children. There were seven of those children. Everyone of them lived to be above ninety years old. Their mother, their mother lived to be ninety-three or four, I think.
Seven more than me.
And their dead were probably lived to be a hundred who had got killed, got run over, coming home on a fishing trip. So what's the pleasure of the council on that? I think it's a good, and, and then, then the first thing coming to my mind, he talked about what Dave would like to see us do, and he said, once it's yours, you can do what you want to, but he, he said those things. But our playground down there, it's almost down to the edge of a swarm. If we had, if we had a playground up there visible, somebody come to Wausau and they see a pot lot or whatever, what you wanna call it up there, maybe some nice, uh, playground equipment, uh, we could also use it as a place to rent rather than our City Hall or some awesome palace that's back online, it'll be, it's got a kitchen in it, that, there's a place that we've got a kitchen in and things like that. People can come there, prepare or warm food, it's got, it's got a bathroom already in it, and everything is, it, it's just a, I think it'd be a good place for family reunions and some things like that, when you don't need a big place as awesome palace or something like that. Be a good place to do, so. But I would think like, I'd like to see, I'd like to see some of our, like, share, something visible out there that's, looks good for the kids. Yeah, the downside being, it's easier to kid, that one outside the road, there is, and that's one.
I was gonna say, it's right by Seven Seventy, it's a busy street.
Yeah, yeah, it is, it is. It'd have to be, it'd have to be fenced and monitored and something like that. Of course, folks wouldn't want to send their kids to play without.
They would, you know.
We're not, we're not living in the day when we could walk down there and play all day and be safe, or we.
No.
All right, what's the pleasure of the council?
What are we gonna do about the, do we have to build a building for the, uh, if we do the committal?
No, but you said, what's there?
No, you said shelter, it's all there, they would get people in and out of the rain. Now, it, you know, it's time, actually, if we, we decide to close it or something like that, that would be up to us, but they just wouldn't, just, they would like.
Just use what we got.
Yeah, he saw that, he saw that working down there, and he said, this is something that if y'all can make it available to, uh, to, uh, say, someone or somebody had a funeral in there, in a rainy day, that they could come there, do the committal, and then the family could leave, the funeral home could go to the grave when they wanted to or something like that, but it, it would keep people from having to drive up in the cemetery and all that. And it's all, it's, it's only if somebody asks to use it, it's not something that we would.
Add it back.
Yeah. Anybody else?
It sounds good to me. I mean, you know, I don't see where it could be anything bad at all.
And, and if we, if we vote on it tonight, Mr. Rogers will come in January, make a formal, he didn't, he, he asked me, but would I float it to the council, see what our reaction was. If we say yes, he'll come and make a formal presentation in our January meeting.
So we have to make a motion to accept the property?
Just accept the property, uh-huh.
Yeah, that's a good thing. I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and second, Ms. Carter and Mr. Carter, any discussion on the motion? I say, where I start with you again, though, Mr. Carter, but yes, Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Grace and Sheriff, she is. I'll be first, y'all want to? Okay. The second thing that isn't, and it isn't, yes, yes it is, I'm sorry, I wasn't far enough now. The second thing is, uh, we, I've been approached, and, and if we get our monies to turn this, uh, building next door into a, to a, an area for COVID and things like that, we got endorsement from the Health Department, got endorsement from the, uh, uh, hospital and, uh, we have a doctor who wants to put an office in there, wants to come here with a business and put an, put an office in there. And we'd, we'd be receptive for that, to lease it or rent it, and, and sometimes we need y'all to grant monies and things like that. I don't know that you could lease and rent, and I, I don't, we'd have to investigate that, but, uh, and they said, I could use her name. Uh, Ms. Dawn Frost is interested in, uh, she's moving her clinic out of the Vernon area, and she would like to move it to Wausau. We hadn't had a doctor in Wausau in seventy years.
We didn't know.
Who would rent it for? For like maintenance and to do the maintenance, if we'll get a grant to redo the building?
I don't see a problem with that.
She'd need to come and rent it all the time.
See, and, and we're always, we, we think about where we make, you have revenues to maintain staff that we're hiring or maintain things at the beginning. If we do something that generates some revenue, then that's a good string to go to our budget.
Is she gonna be here full-time? I mean, she gonna?
She wants to be here full-time.
Uh, Monday through Friday, right?
Well, we, yeah, we, we don't know that, but she wants to be our, she wants to be our full-time doctor. And with, uh, with the Health Department's endorsement and things like that, and, uh, you know, there may be s, I don't know what else we might need, maybe a dentist, maybe a therapist that would come in and use some, share some facilities. There may be some, some other things that we might could, might could do to help the people in Wausau.
There's a lady that talked to me, uh, a few, couple of weeks back, Cindy Brown. Wants to do her speech therapy there.
Wow.
Uh, maybe three or four thousand months, you know?
Wow.
And she wanted me to find out about it for her.
Yeah. What this new road's gonna do is let anybody go to Chippie faster than they ever have before, but we got people in Wausau that's not as, not as, not as keen, and not as keen on getting out on the road, you know, what if they had a doctor's office right here?
Yeah, I'd be good.
We got a couple of beauty shops around, we're gonna get a little shop, I don't know.
And it's maybe something we could investigate if we don't get funded for our grant, that she might wanna come in and remodel that, you know, assist with the remodeling of that building to grant it to where she could rent it, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
But hopefully, you know, we're still in running for the grant.
And we've got, yeah, and we've got a lot of credit, we made, we modeled, and then she could pay, she could pay our loan off, and then after the loan paid off, we still made it. Okay, do we need a vote here? I just need, can I just tell her that we're very interested in that, and as we know more about the acquisition of monies and all I had was staying to it? Is that okay with the council? Okay. All right, and then the last thing is employee Christmas bonuses.
He can not, we've been through it this year.
I'm usually told, I'm usually told what I recommend, but I haven't been told this year what I have recommended. What do I recommend? It's been, what?
Two hundred.
Two hundred dollars and, and, uh, and, uh, was it two hundred for, it was two hun, last year was two hundred for both because we only had, we only had two employees.
We had three, yeah, we had three, uh, uh, Steve and.
Yeah, Steve.
We had three that year.
You, and was Steve?
His was the same.
His was the same, okay, okay. So this year.
Steve, y'all, y'all may not think Steve does a lot, he does a lot, you know, he keeps it. He's had soccer, he's done this, and he's done that, you know, he's not very good on Nebraska, but he does a lot for the youth of the, uh, the town, you know? Does very lot.
And a lot of people wouldn't do it now.
He's, his interest is for children.
He's unique in that, he sure is.
He's interested.
He's very interested.
I believe he'd do the job if it wasn't paid job, I believe he'd.
But what he makes, he does.
I believe he'd do it, I do believe he'd do it.
And I, and I know Tim has, and I wanna say this, I know Tim's only been here six months, but Tim hit six months here, you know? But second week, Tim was here, our well system went down, completely down. That man worked day and night on the weekends. He'd come out here three days, three times a day, every weekend, uh, that he was off to run that well manually for four weeks. And he's done a lot in that six months that he's been here. So, you know, I know y'all do, normally don't do for the six months employees, but, you know, I would greatly appreciate y'all making an exception for him this year because, you know, he's worked hard and done probably more in that six months than, well, we've never faced that in the twenty-five years I've been here.
And we hope, we hope this grant, we don't ever have to have somebody babysitting the weight again, but, but he, he did, he was, he was very busy, very busy. Okay, so we have, uh, five employees?
We have five employees. Now, two of them just started, one a week ago and one two weeks ago. So that's all, you know, I'm not gonna make play for all day, but Steve and Tim I will make play for, you know, that.
Uh, the chair would, the chair would recommend that we do bonuses in the amount of two hundred dollars for those employees, which is the same thing it's been for several years now, that we do it for those three employees that, uh, that are senior employees, and then we do a hundred dollars for the two new employees. I think that's a recommendation. Don't accept a motion for anything else. Do we think we need to do more?
A lot of cities are doing more this year, except for because of the COVID and what the employees have been through in the past year.
Some doing more because of that and, and because they got the money to do it.
Yeah, I think that's an eligible expenditure, the bonuses, the, 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 yeah.
First, Mr. Mr. DeSantis has got a lot of nerve and a lot of vision and things like that, but, uh, I got a granddaughter that works with the Department of Corrections, they gonna get, they gonna get eight days for two holidays. They gonna get four days for Christmas and four days for, and a raise on top of it, and I'm glad for it. I'm especially glad for the raise, it's gonna be a continuing thing, help their families and all that, first responders. But, but after a while, Mr. Sam Mitchell always told us he bought turkeys home, but he never did bring any turkey feed. You have to feed those turkeys after the first year. But, uh, but I, I'm not opposed to something higher. I'm, I'm saying Mrs. Holden and Tyson, I would, I would recommend that again. And, uh, if we think we need to do more, we'll take a motion on that. If we think this is too much or need to, need to shift it, we'll, we'll vote on that. Anybody have a motion?
I don't think we were paid to, to just hire this on being there two weeks. We can take that money and, and give Margaret general raise.
A bigger bonus.
Bigger bonus.
It is probably unusual for people to get bonuses and leave town or other benefits that, that we did. We brought them, we brought them on out of our desire to start getting some things done. They really weren't scheduled to come on until the first of the year anyway, so we, we asked them to bring them on, so that's not, that's not something I'm opposed to.
So I'll make that motion.
For three hundred for Tim and I?
Three hundred for.
Two hundred for Steve or three hundred for all three of us or what?
Um. I don't know what you got, Steve. He works in Florida. He works, and he does pretty good. Let's give him three, too.
Yeah, we, we, we treated him like a, like a regular forty-hour regular employee.
He works a lot during summer.
His forty hours come after the.
He worked, he had soccer this year during the winter.
Yeah, his forty hours comes after the, after sundown lots of time. We don't see him punching the clock or something, but he, he does. Okay, we have a motion that we, uh, that we give, uh, this year, that we give three hundred dollar raise, and this will be this year. Next year, we'll have to be, since it begins at.
Right.
We give three hundred dollars to Margaret, Steve, and Tim for our Christmas bonuses. Do I hear second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Have you voted?
Yes.
Sure, yes, have you voted?
Yes.
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 Anyone from the council have anything else for the council tonight? Anyone from the audience? We are certainly glad and prayers. I do watch the videos sometimes. I do wish I didn't say some things that I say, but.
Yeah, me both.
It's like I did, I'm trying to unshoot a gun.
It's not the first time I've heard you say that, or what you do.
It's, well, it looks like I would learn, but, uh, uh, I guess we aren't what we are, and as long as I'm not fancy for a vote, for a right, just, uh.
Do you have something for us?
Oh, Mr. Carter?
Don't leave anything except Merry Christmas and make sure you get that ethics training.
Everybody's got it.
Father's got mine.
You got it?
Mr. You got hers. So everybody's good this year.
My father always used to say, I don't care if you quote me, as long as you do it correctly, so I'll try not to say anything that, that you couldn't say that I said. All right, I always, I hope everybody has a Merry Christmas. We'll do this again next month, and, uh, the Lord bless all of your families. Your journey.